I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We have a prayer now?
Good Lord, Father, we thank you from the state and from the privilege to serve you in this capacity. We pray for your presence over us in the knowledge and wisdom to make our decisions best for all. And our business be righteous and our fellowship be sweet. This is praying with the name of Jesus.
Roll call?
Bob Barlet. Scott Ketchaw.
Yeah.
Please, Nutson.
Here.
Steve Nutson.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Patty.
Here.
Jim Steele.
Here.
Uh, the floor's open for anybody who wants to present anything. Mike, is CEDOCOG here? There he is. Floor's yours.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Now, this is my first time seeing the council, but my name's Tyler Goprowski. I'm the director of the community development program at CEDOCOG. I'm doing CDPG for the administration. We started working with Methlin County back in December for administration of all the county and Atobio CDPG programs. Tonight, I've got Michael Fonti with me from the county. So, as it's, uh, on the notice outside the door, tonight's the first public hearing for the CDPG program. So, I see we have a busy agenda tonight. I'll try and keep it on the concise side. We do have agenda packets, which, if I can trouble folks to just pass these around the table. And then we also have agenda list for the public, and anyone with the public is so interested in packet. So, the CDPG program comes from the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 with HUD. So, this is federal HUD funding. Since 1984, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development has had a formula program where counties and municipalities such as Louis Towne Borough across the state get an annual allocation of funds. So, last year, the borough received $145,546. allocations have not been provided by the state yet for 2024. But looking at the congressional budget and what is allocated to Pennsylvania for this year's CDPG program, it is pretty close to the same as last year's program. So, we estimate that Louis Towne Borough is going to get a very similar allocation as what it did last year, $745,000. On page two, or rather, page three of the agenda, is our tentative schedule for this year's CDPG program for Louis Towne Borough. Again, tonight being the first public hearing. We have a month timeframe as far as any project proposals, whether that be from the borough or the public as far as project ideas. And then, on August 14th, we'll be back for the council meeting that night to get a selection as far as what we want to do this year. And then there's a final public hearing that is held at the county commissioners meeting on September 19th. That's what the plan is right now. We will look for the county to approve sending the allocation, or the application to the state that same day, September 19th. And then the application for Methlin County, again, including Louis Towne Borough, would be October 24th, or October of 2024, usually the last Friday in October. So, that's just the tentative schedule that we're looking at. As far as eligible and ineligible activities with the CDPG program, the following page of the packet provides a long list of what is eligible for CDPG projects. So, it's a pretty long list. There's relatively few things that we can't do with CDPG. The challenge always is, would the CDPG program meeting the national objective? Which there's three national objectives with the CDPG program. Benefit the low-to-moderate-income residents, you know, the slum light, and addressing urgent needs. And at least 70% of the borough's funds on an annual basis must be going towards benefit the low-to-moderate-income residents. Louis Towne Borough as a whole is defined as a low-to-moderate-income municipality, which does allow for some more flexibilities with how the borough can choose to spend its funds. So, there's, as far as project proposals that we're looking to receive over the next month or so, there's not a match requirement with the CDPG program. But if there's any nonprofit organizations or the like within the borough that may be interested in submitting a proposal, ultimately, it's the borough council here that makes decisions on how, or what projects are selected. But being able to demonstrate a match certainly doesn't hurt things. So, just moving on to number two in the packet, public announcements. There's just some general literature concerning the CDPG program in the packet that I've provided. The first is concerning fair housing. So, with this funding ultimately being from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, there's some of the strings that naturally come with federal money. One of the big ones is concerning fair housing. So, there's some discussion in the packet concerning fair housing rights, what potentially housing discrimination looks like, the protections that Pennsylvania and U.S. residents are provided as far as fair housing. And that ties back to Title VIII and Civil Rights Act of 1968 on the federal level and Pennsylvania Human Relations Act at the state level. So, there's some literature there as far as what that looks like. We also have in the packet the county's anti-displacement program, which if in the event the borough or the county were to do a CDPG project or somebody was displaced from their homes, they would have to follow this plan. I can't speak for Methlin County because we just started working with them recently. But just in my time working at CEDOCOG, we've been doing CDPG projects for 40 years. I don't think we've ever had a project where somebody's been displaced from their homes. But it is a policy that we have to have in our policies and procedures for the program that provides residents with protections if there was ever such a project that was proposed. Section 504 outreach is in the packet as well. Just if there's public facilities, whether that be with Louis Towne Borough, the county, or any other recipients of CDPG funds, as far as accessibility issues that exist in the county. There's some literature here as far as who the point of contact is, as far as those issues. Lonnie Griffin with Methlin County is our point of contact for any accessibility complaints. And generally, if we were to receive an accessibility complaint, that could be a CDPG potential project to try and rectify that accessibility issue. And then we just have the section three preference statement at the bottom of the agenda, which is concerning low-to-moderate-income economic benefit for our projects, CDPG projects. And this is a specific HUD requirement. If we have a project that goes out to bid, for instance, our contractors that work on the projects are obligated to take certain steps as far as encouraging low-to-moderate-income resident participation on the projects if there happens to be job opportunities with the contractor. So, that's just some general information. As far as the status of the borough's CDPG program, all of your funds have been expended up through 2022. So, last year, when the borough made its submission to DCD, it had allocated $123,715 for repaving a 4th, 5th, and Grand Streets in the borough here. Just in discussion with Kim a little bit more as we've become involved with the borough, Kim shared that there's some significant inflow and infiltration issues in those areas that need to be addressed, I believe, concerning a consent order. And it's the thought, at least in some initial discussions with Kim, that it might be wise to delay repaving those streets until some of that inflow and infiltration work has been addressed. So, that's the only project you really have on the docket right now. If you are looking to delay doing that paving work indefinitely, it would be my recommendation, once your 2023 funds are received, to look at maybe reallocating those funds to another project. So, that kind of brings us to the main reason we're here tonight, is to solicit project proposals either from the council or the public. So, at this time, I'll open it up the floor first to the council as far as any thoughts that you may have, or staff from that, or Kim, for instance.
Rec Park. You'd like to take some of that money, $123,715, and divert it over into Rec Park?
Okay.
Couple reasons. One is Rec Park, but also the money can get a one-to-one match with DCNR. So, we can make good use of that money to do some work at Rec Park. There's no handicap access down there. We don't have any handicapped equipment for residents to use. The parking lot needs paved. So, it's everything outside the fence, the pool, that we can work on with this money. So, I'd like to reallocate that money for use in Rec Park. The money from 2023.
Thank you.
And then for 2024, same.
Okay. And any comments or thoughts from the council, mayor, about that proposal or other project ideas?
You know, one thing that was mentioned was the I&amp;I work. That funding would be eligible for that as well, wouldn't it, in this council?
So, not the paving, but the I&amp;I work?
Right.
So, we would have to get some more information as far as those sewer lines, what areas those are specifically serving. But yes, there is potential we could maybe be able to cover some of that either now or down the road. But we would need more information.
What do you think?
Yeah, the other piece, I mean, I had a meeting today with E's. And we were looking at I&amp;I as well, if there was money left over from the park. But it's your call. But we're not looking for I&amp;I in the sewer side. We're looking at the stormwater side.
Okay.
Because the sewer side has funding from fees and stuff that's generated for the utility side, not the stormwater side.
Okay.
So, we have a consent order to also GIS our entire stormwater system. And so, there's a big chunk of money out there we don't have for that. We would like to put that towards that to begin the process. Lucas is going to talk later about some grants that they submitted for us. One of them is a $600,000 grant being requested to help offset that for the stormwater piece. So, this could be a piece of. I agree it's I&amp;I, but specifically on the I&amp;I for stormwater.
Any other comments?
It's open to the public too.
Yeah.
The council's willing to take ideas.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, certainly one of the public's input as well, as far as any project proposals. Okay, hearing none, thank you. Just the only other item on the agenda, just as far as, it sounds like the, probably in the near future, the 4th, 5th, and Grand Street paving project will be abandoned at least temporarily.
House gone, yes.
Yeah, that's probably more appropriate, way to put it. But any environmental or historical concerns from anyone as far as either the street project or potentially over at Rec Park?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, I appreciate everyone's time and look forward to working with the borough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Todd. Thank you.
Laura Hendricks?
First of all, I'd like to say thanks for letting me speak. And at the conclusion of your meeting, I invite everybody on borough council down to my yard. Because I would like people, I will be glad to move the chair. I have a chair set up with a cardboard box and a plastic bag to help diffuse the air conditioning issue that is being put into my backyard, at which I've gone back and forth with code enforcers since May with emails, phone calls, talked to Rex, talked to Caitlin. At one time, Caitlin even told me that her and Rex had talked about possibly taking this portable, it's a portable AC unit. And they talked about somehow piping that, the vent or the smell away from my yard. So, I'm assuming out and over in the backyard of where this tenant lives. This tenant, when they came down, had to clean up weeds, dog feces. She's lived there for a while. I've never reported anything with her before because I've had issues where they've harassed me. I've never even called the police on it. But this time, I actually did call the police the one night because the odor was so bad. I am one that I do not like air conditioning. I should have every right to open my windows, bring the fresh air in front of my backyard, which that could not be done. Now, I do know Rex and Caitlin have been down. I know Kim's been down. Kim said he smelled something that smells like musty, is what his description was. Another time, he said he couldn't smell anything. I think her unit, she has a central air unit, which I believe is now fixed from her landlords. But I'm not 100% sure. I do see the cord that goes into the house now has a wrap on it, like to keep it, you know, like insulation, I'll call it. But that unit still cycles on and off. It's still in that back window. If I moved that chair away, that unit's right at this level. So, every time I go in and out of my house, I'm walking through it. There's no getting away from it. People say, oh, well, it doesn't smell. Initially, it smelled horrible. It smelled like the animals mixed with whatever she is burning, spraying, sprinkling, plugging in, whatever she's doing to cover the odor up. Now, as soon as you move that away, that is all you smell that's coming into my yard. Heat rises, so as it rises, it goes in my back bedroom window. So, that being said, I know she was spoken to by code enforcement. Well, they haven't been back, and the weed, I have pictures of it on my phone, is now this tall at the back of the yard. So, evidently, she's not going to keep up with it. I do know, I complained about her never putting garbage out. I'm like, where's the dog feces gone? Where's the cat litter gone? She has cats too, even though the borough said they saw none. I saw two just this past week. So, there's cats in the house. So, in two weeks' time, no garbage has gone to the curb. I take pictures every week of what's in front of my house and what's in front of her. So, two weeks of no garbage. Where's the dog feces gone? Where's that cat litter gone? I have no idea. But for me, who has lived there 20 years, first as a renter, then as the property owner, for me to have to put up with that, because I'm not one of these ones that have to have air conditioners in all my windows and live in central air, to have to put up with walking through that, because there's no way, when I park my Jeep out back, I walk through my yard, and it's right there. And I have pictures on my phone I'd be willing to share. Not only is there issues with her not putting garbage out, the weeds, there are two unlicensed vehicles, uninspected, backed in. The one vehicle has bricks that has been, I don't know, just to hold it forward from rolling away. I don't know. It has sat there for a couple of years now, as long as she's lived there. The other white van, the inspection expired last May of '23, and all of a sudden, it's now backed in, no plate. You go up and down the alley. I sent a picture to Rex and Caitlin last week, and two days later, it was finally taken care of. 35 and 37 was recently sold. I don't know who bought it. But I have a picture on my phone. The weeds, I bet, were three, four foot high. I mean, I don't necessarily work for code enforcement, but I'm not just going to report one person. If I'm going to say, hey, this is what's happening here, I'm going to let them know what's happening up the whole alley and out front too. I mean, it's a shame. You're just talking about Rec Park. Rec Park is a beautiful park. The guys maintain it. It's mowed, it's clean, it's lovely. And yet, you drive down Montgomery Gateway to get into Rec Park, and what do you see? I mean, I've lived there for 20 years, and I hate to say it. When I first moved there, people were like, ooh, you live on Montgomery Avenue. I'm like, well, not every house on Montgomery Avenue is trash. I'm sorry. And when you go up and down half the other streets on the borough, I'd be like saying the same thing about half the other streets. But my point is, why should I have to continue to smell that scent, not the central air, but the portable air conditioning unit that is in that window? I have pictures on my phone. I can show you what it looks like without my, I'll call it a diffuser in front of it. I can show you with the chair and everything, oh, excuse me. The chair that I have propped up to it. And it's just ridiculous. And I can tell you, there's another neighbor here about all the issues with the dogs and the garbage. And I understand when you send something to either the landlord, the tenant, whoever you notify by mail. I'm sure it's costing you money to send it out. But then maybe the borough needs to look at inciting something like, one, two, three, you're out. So, in other words, we send something to you once, send something to you twice. The third time, either the landlord's going to pay a fine, tenant's going to pay a fine, or if the property's owned, because in some cases, the property's owned by somebody, then we start totting it up, and at the end of the year, we put a lien against your property. I mean, at some point, these people have to put their, excuse me for saying this, their big girl and their big boy panties on and be responsible. If I could be out there weekly at 65 years of age in the heat, mowing my grass, weeding along my fence, sweeping my sidewalk, shoveling my snow, when I know for a fact the tenant beside me never shoveled this, no, we didn't have lost snow this past winter, but not once was it shoveled out front. It was just there until I got walked through and melted away. I mean, it's one thing after the other on that street. And it seems like nobody wants to step up. Is it because we don't want to trample on somebody's toes? I don't know if that's a fact or not. But I just think it's ridiculous. And that's why I said I invite any of you, if you want to come down, let me know you're coming down. I'll move the chair away. When that portable air conditioning unit cycles on and off, you can smell the lovely smell, because as the heat rises, it comes in the back of my house. So, that's basically what I have to say about most of it. I mean, I know I've been back and forth with Rex and Caitlin a million times, you know, on the phone, through emails, also with Kim. But I think it's about time somebody needs to put their foot down and say, hey, this is it. I mean, she's lived there all that time. I haven't bothered her with some of the stuff that her and her friends have done. I should have called the police back then, and I never did. I thought, I'll ignore it. So, and my only other option is to talk to Rex. And there's an existing vinyl fence there. Why should I have to pay to have that vinyl fence put up through the concrete to block that off? That's the only other way to block it, if I block those two windows that belong to that property. So, I just think it's ridiculous that something can't be done. And I'm told it's a civil issue. As far as I'm concerned, it's not a civil issue. It was a code enforcement issue back in May that was never taken care of. So, if Caitlin and Rex were talking about how they can vent it away, fine, let her leave it in there. But then you vent the smell away out of my yard. Because I keep my yard fairly decent.
Caitlin, is there violations at that location?
With the AC unit? No. So, I talked to the HVAC guy, and he had fixed it officially on Friday. He said he was requesting the tenant leave the portable AC unit in for this hot streak this week, just in case it would malfunction again. And then as soon as this hot streak's over, she can remove the unit, because by then, they'll know officially if it is working. I was down there every single day this week and checked it. When I was there, the portable AC unit was not on because the central air was maintained at a temperature inside. I was there Monday at 2:07, Tuesday at 12:56, and today at 1:18, that portable AC unit was not on at all when I was there during the hottest part of the day.
Okay, so, you just walked by with me. Was it running?
Yes.
It cycles on and off?
She had to go, it took her very hard to get her car to come here.
And it cycles on and off?
But there's no code violations, correct?
Not with the AC unit, no. No, no, she does have high grass in her backyard. And I called the owner about it again today, and she said, send me a letter, and I will send it to the tenant to have them mow it. But again, as Mark Remy can attest, when we send out letters, we have then give them 10 days to mow it, and then it goes to citation. I can't just force her to do it that day. And unfortunately, with the hot streak, we don't necessarily want people out there mowing their grass right now and passing out the paint and all shit.
But I invite you down to smell it. Because I'm sure it'll, I'm sure I can go home and it'll cycle on and off. Now, is she's truly going to take it out when the hot streak is over? But if not, that's still, I mean, I have windows upstairs right now that are open to pull air through.
And we've done an inspection on the inside of the unit twice. There was not trash anywhere. There was not a single dirty dish to sink. And we did a surprise inspection after the initial inspection, and there was no trash to be found anywhere. There was no dog feces. They did have a roof leak, so it does smell musty inside. The roofrenner's supposed to come back and replace the bridge across the top because they made the thing too small. But other than that, there was no code violations inside besides one missing.
What's the address?
Forty three.
Forty three, and then forty five is the other issue. Because when she first came out that night, my comment was her, to her was, can you move it over to the other side of the windows? Because that big family addition has windows on each side. And you know what her reply was to me? The dogs on the other side jump up at her windows all of the time. So, right there again, we're dealing with forty five that has multiple dogs that jump up at the windows because she has multiple dogs. I mean, I've lived there all those years, and now all of a sudden, there's an issue? I mean, like I said, I invite you all down. I'll be glad to move the chair aside. You can stand there when it kicks on. You can smell it. But it does kick on, it does run off and on. I can attest that her central.
I don't know, I don't know how we can tell somebody to take their exhaust from an air conditioner and not put it towards your property. I don't get it.
We can't given it.
We can't do that.
No. It has to be with her, the landlord, and.
Absolutely. We can't direct that.
We can't do it.
Well, I sent in a thing to the health department and never heard anything about that. I mean, I shouldn't be out there. I shouldn't have to smell that when I'm out there mowing the grass.
Have you tried looking it out with the neighbor? Have you tried talking to the neighbor?
I've actually called the landlord, almost I have a wrong number, and also texted her, and I've never heard back.
The landlord has every intention of having the tenant remove the unit as soon as the HVAC guy says, yes, it is definitely fixed. They just didn't want to leave her without AC for this heat streak. And that was confirmed by both the HVAC guy, who I talked to on Friday, and the landlord, who I talked to on Monday. They just want to make sure it's definitely fixed before they have a real look at it.
Okay. Thank you. And I love to speak since I live by her, and I'm putting up with these horrendous conditions for my home also. Hi, I'm Gloria Michaels. I live on 47 Montgomery Avenue, and my conditions are just as horrendous as hers. The neighbor that I'm attached to does not put their garbage out. And I have to call Rex every other Wednesday, and he has to send them a code and violation against all the garbage, and dog feces, very, very fierce. And you're more welcome to come down to my place. And he says it costs money every single time they have to come down and do this. They won't put the garbage out. They will not clean up after their dogs. Right now, they have a car that needs inspected, another car that's busted down on the sidewalk. And it's bad.
Is that that white car?
Yeah, they've been working on it for three days.
The white car?
They're just walking the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Right there by the alley.
Your panel, like, where Lepley has this, yeah.
This is Mr. Lepley's, or heard of it's Mr. Lepley's property. This is Mr. Lepley's property.
That's against the rules of the borough.
You can't walk the sidewalk either.
I stopped calling the police on circumstances on Montgomery Avenue, because the last time I called a policeman, he said, Mrs. Michaels, what would you like me to do about this situation? He took me off guard. And I said, I just wanted to make you aware of the motorcycle that is Big Harley Davidson riding up and down the sidewalk. And there's many other things besides weeds and... I have the same situation as her. I could not let the windows open. I had to put air conditioners in the windows, because the dog feces is so bad, and the flies are so bad. And you're more welcome to come down, and you'll see it all. And Montgomery Avenue never used to be that way. I raised three beautiful children on that street. And I don't know if I forgot anything or not, but...
Dave, is there something we could do about the vehicle parked on the sidewalk and the motorcycle riding down sidewalks?
He has it sitting on the sidewalk, and he's working on it. I saw the...
The coordinates he gets, doesn't he?
Yeah, they're working it. He has it slanted on the...
Yep, he has the whole front torped.
Yeah.
But they are also the people that have no respect, because they're the ones that are up to me that have the dog situation, the garbage situation. They busted my truck window, which caused controversy. They had to pay for it. So there is disharmony. But I've never done anything to them. It's just... And I've lived there twenty-some, thirty years.
Is that a rental?
Uh, no, no, they own that one. And that's the one we send the letters, and they get right before citation, and then they'll clean it up, and then it starts all over again.
So that happened last Wednesday. Next Wednesday, they put out...
They cleaned everything up.
Probably eight bags of garbage. This Wednesday, no garbage. So there is four bags of garbage piled up against my privacy fence and a busted chair. And this is what they...
Can I say something?
Probably don't have any tags.
Hey, Tyler.
Yes?
I didn't mean to wake you up. Hey, this great document, Eligible Activities, you have code enforcement on here for CGB. Can you elaborate on it, if it's possible? Do you know enough about it to elaborate what that means, what we can do with that money for code enforcement?
Yeah, sure.
Please?
So code enforcement is an eligible activity. It does have to meet a national objective. So if the borough were to fund a code enforcement activity, it would have to be in your LMI, higher density areas.
And they live in one of the highest ones in town, though. They are.
Okay, so it is a little bit more complicated than just putting money into code enforcement, and that's that. So we would have to essentially look at your current borough budget and see how much you have allocated in your code enforcement program. And we'd have to be able to essentially document an increase to your code enforcement budget. We could help with the increase of the budget. We'd also have to be, as part of the process, document that as a part of the code enforcement effort, that we would be taking on other public and private improvements in that high density area to help arrest the code enforcement issues underlying the area.
Great. Thanks, Tyler. Thank you. Thanks.
Do you have the right to change the codes of the borough to enforce the garbage piling up and such? These things can be changed. You have that right?
Yeah, I mean, there's a pretty detailed process for pre-collection practices. I'm sure Caitlin and Rex are familiar with. But yeah, it involves, you know, you have to give the people notice and an opportunity to correct it. And, you know, it sounds like that's what codes is doing. So they're following the procedure that's been set forth.
It's just a shame that the borough has to lay out all that additional money. And I mean, that's why I'm saying it's a shame there isn't like, one, two, three times, you're out, and now you're getting a really big fine, or we're putting a lien against your property, or now the landlord's gonna have a big fine. You know what I'm saying?
I mean, if they don't follow through with what the notice from codes tells them to do, they will be cited and they will be fined. But what I'm hearing is that they clean up before it goes to citation.
And then it piles up, and they get noticed?
Yeah.
It's never ending. But yes, codes can be changed with the discretion of council and legal matters. We can take a look at that, see what it says. We've got our next law enforcement meeting tomorrow night, five o'clock.
So I just one more thing, and then I'll leave you all. Get on with everything you have to do. Is there a way that you can notify me when supposedly the unit's good to go?
I think the heat wave is supposed to be done by Monday. So I come down to Montgomery Avenue, that is, I would choose.
That would be great, because I know you, Rex, and, you know, I'm not saying you're not working on it.
Yeah, no, I tried to follow up with it, and I didn't heat him out there and everything. I just don't want them to pull that unit out in case it does, under which is a heartbreak in this heat wave. We don't want them. We don't want them suffering in this heat. But yeah, I'll follow up with you Monday when the heat breaks.
All right. I thank you very much. I thank all of council and everybody else. I appreciate it.
I do too. Thank you very much for listening. Uh-huh, thank you.
Does anybody else have... Was that anything?
Hello, my name's Brittany Hall. I was here a few months ago and spoke with you guys about the spring plain sipping shop that we had in Red Park. So tonight, I'm here to request permission to do a similar event. We did it last year. It was called Lucky Friday. It was goose day last year. We did it for the first time. It was kind of thrown together. Brian Cherry and I from the St. Coffee Shop did it last year in about a month. And so this year, we're looking to amp it up. I don't know if any of you guys were there. I know Deb was there. But it was an amazing event. The streets were packed. I don't know that I've seen Louis Town like that for a very long time. So this year, we're looking to do it Friday, September twenty-seventh. It's an evening event. It would be from five to nine. We're looking at food trucks, local artisans, crafters, small businesses, boutiques, kids' activities, live music, a car show. So a lot of things that are planned. We have a hundred and twenty-plus community members interested in being a part of it. So I'm just here to kind of request permission. We're looking to shut down East Market Street. I did meet with Kim already about this, kind of tentatively, and with Caitlin. We came up with a map. So pending approval, we would then submit it to PennDOT and make sure that they were on board with it.
She has met with us. She's... I think you filled out the facility use request. Yeah, and then we've gone through with the mapping with Caitlin. It's gone through Brian, so it's in the works. I think really, it wasn't on the agenda for tonight. I didn't know she was showing up, but it's not a problem. Don't get her off. Everything is being worked. I think it would go to council for approval based on PennDOT's approval, because of all the detours that are involved. So council will approve it based on PennDOT's proof.
If I can interject, it'll probably just be the same detours as, like, Kid Connection. We're closing pretty much the same stuff. We're just gonna close down the street. Last year, they didn't close it, and it was kind of iffy safety-wise. So we'd always more comfortable if we could close down the streets just to make it safer for kids. They're running in and out.
So from the jail to Five Points or jail to...
Yes, yes, preferably. That way, they can use some of, put the mall area and stuff to set up some things. And with the car show, it would just be better all around. And it was gonna be a rather large event.
We used to do that for the hour expensive.
Right.
I remember that being a popular event, huge event in the community. So I know we had excellent feedback from community members last year. And I'd love to do it again. Thank you.
So we have to wait till they get their approval from PennDOT?
No, no, wait, it works that you guys approve it. And then if PennDOT comes back and approves it for that, it's automatically done. If PennDOT doesn't come back and approve it, you may approve it, but it doesn't go through.
Okay.
Do you have alcohol in this event?
Yes, so we're looking to have just tastings, like we did at the sip and shop.
And there was no problems at Sip and Shop?
Two to three, yeah, no issues at all. So not selling alcohol and beverages, just tastings.
Just like they had for the successful event down there.
This is twenty-seventh, Friday, September?
Yes, correct, yep. The Visitors Bureau is looking to do the drone show again this year. So that follows it at nine-thirty. I think that brought a lot of foot traffic out, but it was really awesome. It's a great event. Did you have a question?
No, I'm saying that...
Oh, okay.
What dates is it?
September twenty-seventh, yep.
Does she have insurance policy?
Really appreciate it that you do.
Thank you.
It's so nice to go down to Louis Town.
It was awesome.
Is it Saturday? We have a football game.
Well, actually, that's what I was gonna say. Last year, it was the same night as the homecoming game. We were concerned that was gonna be an issue, but I mean, it was...
I couldn't figure out what was going on in the sky. I didn't know anything was going on. They just stayed at the stadium and sat there and watched.
Yeah.
Did you already submit the form?
Yes.
I thought I saw that form.
You're gonna have insurance.
Yes, yep. And we did get permission to use the JVB lot again. That's what we used last year, along with the Altery Gang Rank lot. So we're planning to use those again, but we have a lot planned. And we're gonna have live music down here at the courthouse, so it'll be fun night.
If council approves it, just come and see me, Brian, and Caitlin, and we'll get this worked out with you, okay?
So then you'll let me know if it's a go?
If council approves it, I'll tell you.
Okay.
Then motion, we move forward, but...
Thank you.
Going there, say aye?
Aye.
Close?
Thank you.
Just give it a hold for next week and come and see us, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Tim.
What's this event called specifically?
Lucky Friday in downtown Louis Town. If you eat goose, it's supposed to bring luck, so that's why it's called that. Still waiting.
Lucky Friday.
We have another lady who wants to speak.
So I've been a renter in Louis Town since '09. And I've never really had any problems with my previous landlord. He owned the property and then sold it, and then I moved to Logan Street. And John Connolly used to have the property. And it's like right off of Walnut Street exit at the stop sign, so I'm right there. And a gentleman from Ben Salem purchased the property about three years ago. And when I was renting, this is a three-bedroom, not remodeled, no fresh carpet, no fresh paint, nothing. You know, this is just a house with a yard that I'm living in. And CEDOC came in about six years and redid the stuff for me. And so, of course, that was an improvement to the property. And the landlord at that time did not increase my rent. And they were increasing my rent like every year for like five percent or three percent or something, and it was like fifty bucks a year. Sometimes not even. And now, his name is Jonathan Roman. He purchased the property three years ago, and he has increased my rent four hundred and fifty dollars since he has purchased the property. This past winter, from trucks going by and the foundation not being that great, that house has settled. So my side door and my back door kept coming open every time a truck would go past, even though I would lock my door on deadbolt day. So I told him about my doors opening during the winter, and I was paying a lot of money for space heaters and electric. So he came in and he put two brand-new doors on my house. And that is the only thing he has done. And I also have a hole twice the size of this podium in my kitchen floor that has not been fixed. You and Rex came up to see it. And I just have a big piece of plywood on my kitchen floor. He has refused to fix it. He says that for it to be fixed, I need to move out. And when I move back in, after a week of it being fixed, he needs to increase my rent to twelve hundred. I am paying seven fifty right now. He is increasing my rent July first to eight fifty. And so I told him he has not fixed anything to make the property better for me as a tenant, and I continuously pay my rent. And he's extorting me, because he's telling me he replaced my doors, so now I need to pay more rent. So I know in New Jersey, there are laws against this. And I just wanna know what there is. I mean, as a tenant, I mean, I pay all my bills. I take care of the property more than what I would my own place. It's my home. I live there. I'm gonna make it my home. So I pay my rent like two weeks in advance. And there was three of us at the three-bedroom house. And he completely remodeled the other side, and he's getting twelve hundred dollars. And he hasn't done anything with my son.
Hey, Michael, I know there was a plan at the county...
And there's also black mold in my bathroom that needs to be taken care of. The mold in my basement needs to be taken care of. It's just a regular dugout basement. I have a dehumidifier that my previous landlord purchased for me. I do empty it out, but there's furry... It's that thick on my basement floor.
You've been out there over a decade.
Um, we were out there once, yes. There is a hole in her floor. She's not lying about any of it. We did advise her to... We can't make legal advice, but we said to withhold rent and put it in an escrow account, and then take him to the magistrate and just say, like, give, say, this is the stuff that needs fixing. I'm going to withhold rent until the items are fixed and have the magistrate make him fix the stuff.
That would be wonderful.
Um, but he says he can't make the repairs while they're living there, because he plans to completely gut and redo the entire kitchen, not just to fix the floor. And he can't do it while they're living there. So it's kind of out of hand still. He says he'll make repairs to it, but it's not gonna be the way it needs to be done.
But he hasn't even made any effort to do anything. Like, hey, is the hole getting bigger?
And the stuff in the basement, it's a dirt floor.
Yeah.
Probably nothing.
Not a road or anything.
It's civil, like, our hands are tied, unfortunately, certainly.
Even with them increasing the rent.
You would have to put your rent lien into an escrow account so that you can take him, but literally write him a letter and say, this is what repairs that you made. You're not making it to the floor.
So then would I have to give him a thirty-day notice or a ten-day notice?
You have to send it to certified mail.
Received.
But I'm not an attorney. I can advise you that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I used to work at a real estate attorney's office, so, you know, like, I know the whole steps to do that, but I didn't know if that was legal in Pennsylvania.
How did the hole get in the floor?
Excuse me?
How did the hole get in?
Um, they never repaired the sink. So the sink was leaking. And when they finally repaired the sink, my boyfriend repaired the sink. He cut out the bottom of it, but it was leaking into the floor underneath the cabinet.
It rotted the way it was on the floor.
Yeah, it rotted the whole, like, you can see the hole, like, you could see the basement floor.
It rotted the way it was on the floor.
Mike, what I was getting at is there's programs at county, if it's out of your office, I don't know if it's active anymore, where they would have money available to come in and kind of renovate some of these houses.
There's a home and a whole home program. Unfortunately, they're not active at the moment. We're still, we were in talks with CEDOC on getting them to run those programs for us.
Okay.
But they fell through at the moment, and we're still trying to rework it.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, because, I mean, they want us to basically move out so they can redo the kitchen, so they don't have, so they can get more rent. Because they said once they redo the floor, our rent is gonna be twelve hundred dollars.
I have to look for another place.
Yeah. And I've been there eight years.
Don't matter.
And it's so hard to find another three-bedroom.
I know.
Especially here, because now people are increasing the rent. You know, everybody's buying these houses, remodeling them. You know, this is, as you guys stated when you first opened the meeting, it's a low to moderate income community. So why are people paying or, you know, demanded to pay twelve hundred dollars? I mean, that's your choice to go find a place. That's twelve hundred dollars. But, I mean, are these places in Louis Town really worth twelve hundred dollars?
No, they can get it. That's what you're...
They can get it, because there's a housing deficiency right now.
Anybody else?
Can you get a highlighter off my desk?
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Appreciate it.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Quite a few.
Quite, okay.
Why is, have we seen the... Has the scheduled bills been sent out to us, across the seat?
What?
You got them right there.
No, that's Treasury report. This is scheduled bills being paid.
That's right underneath it.
Yeah.
Well, why are we just getting them today?
Because they didn't got them done today, right?
That's not a good answer, Jim. We should have these forwarded today. We always did before. We suck.
They are on the website for you.
We'll talk about that later.
I had a motion in a second, oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. We'll turn it over to Kim now, bar manager.
Item number one, digester number one, repair status. Do you want me to go through that, or you wanna do it, Lucas?
I can handle it. Um, we've got everybody in updated attention here, we're trying to keep this up since we have quite a few items on the agenda every month. Uh, the digester repair is underway, um, here a month or two ago, you guys awarded the contract to USG to come in and take the roof off and figure out what we have. They were able to move in, uh, the end of last week, they got started Monday morning, we got the roof off, and we uncovered, uh, the tank is twenty-two feet deep. We didn't know what we were gonna uncover, it could've been all solids. Uh, what we did find, that a majority of the twenty-two feet is a liquid slurry, and then it looks, based upon their initial probing, to have about three feet of hard sledge at the bottom. We don't know what it is yet. So, they've moved their, uh, truck, their back truck in, it has a, what they call portable decanter system, which will clean that liquid slurry, and it'll allow them to pipe the liquids back into the headworks of the treatment plant and just cycle it through for treatment. They've just started that, they're pulling some samples to see the makeup, to see how they need to treat it and what, what it's gonna do. Uh, but they are starting to pump off. Kim has some photographs up here, this is what the roof looked like, uh, in the morning there when they, when they deflated it. Then they, they, they cut along the edges, uh, they brought a crane in, and were able to really just pick, pick that roof off. And once they lifted the roof off and disposed of it, there is a wire mesh that was sort of like a safety, safety net if it ever did deflate it when it get down into the tank, and here's what you're looking at as far as that liquid slurry. That was actually a pretty good sign, cause any of those solids, once they get them broken up and out, that's what we're gonna have to haul to the landfill at a pretty good cost. So, the hope is that, um, as they get into pumping off and treating and reconstituting all the liquid, there's gonna be some time in that, it might take a week or two, there's five hundred thousand gallons there, they gotta work through a pump. Uh, so whether you want it's ten gallons a minute or fifteen, there's some time associated with that. So, that one is, is moving forward well, um, like I said, we're looking at a couple of weeks to do that, get down into the solids and see what we have, um, and start hauling those away. Once we get down to the bottom, we'll see what the original issues were, and was it just a, a, a big clump of something down there that plugged the pipes? Did the pipes break that we have to get in there and clean them up? So, um, we are moving forward with that, and, and so, so far, so good.
The one thing I learned today, is that council realized, you got the big digester, it's this big round thing, you saw the pictures of it. So, you think that it's all full, right? But it's actually cone-shaped in there, I didn't know that.
Definitely.
So, cause it all drains down to a central pipe at the bottom that pulls it out, so it's actually cone-shaped.
Yep, and, and as the solids, uh, are creating bugs, and it gets heavier, it sort of drains down that cone, and we're able to suck the solids off, and that goes over to the press, and then we can press out, and that's sort of the sludge that we send out. And there's pipes in the bottom that we recirculate some of those solids back through, and then those pipes are really what's clogged and what's not really allowing us to suck off the bottom, reconstitute sludge back into that cone area. Uh, so, it's, it's a pretty interesting process for sure. Kim, you probably have that last bullet point coming up, just the county, the, the county loan fund. Um, I believe you guys are, are looking to, to get movement on that.
Yeah, that's on the, the agenda farther down, yes, there is.
Yep, very good. Any, any questions on the digester?
So, it's a better situation than we thought?
So, so far, we've, we have a probably more favorable, uh, favorable experience there once we got that roof off. I think it's a little bit better than, than we had anticipated.
It's a lot, it's actually a lot better when you look at it, cause instead of twenty-two feet of solids, it's only nineteen feet.
Correct.
Three feet of solids and three feet of liquid. So, we can take that liquid off, which he's talking about in the latest terms, take that liquid out, put it back into our sewer system, and it's treated.
Yep.
And we don't have to take it to the sludge.
It should be a clog.
It, there's a good chance, I think from what's the, had they been a clog years ago, like, as?
When they went to that roof system in oh seven, oh eight, they took a Volkswagen size hairball clog out the center of it. So, kinda like guessing that could be very well what is happening this time. Um, so, gotta get it pumped out and find out.
Thanks, guys. Yep.
Did, uh, do you want me to talk about the roof real quick? Cause, cause we are gonna save some money, but we still have costs involved.
Yes.
And the roof is still gonna be replaced.
Sure.
And that's gonna still cost about, I think it's about a half million dollars right now. It takes, what, five, six months, Tom, to, to get that thing built?
Six, twenty weeks, yeah.
Yep, so, it's, that's in the process now, it's CoStar's bid, this contract's already approved, so they're moving forward with it. Um, so, we will have some big bills, but this is a piece of it that won't be as bad as we thought it was gonna be. All right, next thing is military banners, they will go up soon, Ben is in the process now of removing the old banners from the poles. Uh, once he has his staff freed from other priorities, they will be getting the military banners up. ED wastewater collections, commercial ED recommendations, uh, bottom line is I'll probably hit on that later on. We got some discussions with the law ordinance committee tomorrow on that. I and I update, it's kind of on your sheet here, um, but I did wanna, I think I already sent you an email, but I wanna make sure you, you... See, this, this is an ongoing, uh, I think I've got it on here. An ongoing process, I think I've put it on here. No, I don't have it. I thought I did. There was an email I sent to you that, that Todd Polley had sent out with everything we've been doing for I and I. Uh, it has been going well, um, they just did some smoke tests, uh, on the east side of town, so identified a crushed pipe that, uh, we're getting quotes on to get some, um, slip lining done on it. The, the Edgewater pump station, the pumps have been either rebuilt or replaced. Uh, we saw some slide stay from, uh, Eads that basically shows an extreme amount of increased productivity out of that pump station. Uh, from the pumps now being able to pump their six hundred gallon plus per minute versus a hundred, cause they were so clogged up and old. Um, the, the meters that they put in are also working well, um, I hate to say it, but we're waiting for a rainstorm now so we can actually test them, because it's been so dry now, we're waiting for it to rain now so we can actually see, uh, see them work, because they are in a key location next to Dairy Township. So, we are waiting for that to happen, what's that, sir?
Friday.
Friday, is it gonna rain? Maybe it will, cause that's what we're waiting for. Uh, but everything is on track right now with I and I, they are gonna do some more smoke testing here, I believe about the middle of July, um, to continue that process, or, it's over on the west side, I believe, over by the trail, where the other SSOs were coming down by Force Street, Fort Valley. Number five, twelfth July Employee Appreciation Day, we have that on the calendar, we do have the funds for that, and it is not tax money. Um, this will be the third annual Employee Appreciation Day, we'll talk about that when we get to the, uh, the approval section at the end of the agenda. Pendot Winter Maintenance, Road Maintenance Agreement, they brought their, uh, agreement to me for review, it's a five-year agreement with Pendot, which means we will plow the Pendot streets in the borough, like Valley Ave and some other ones. Um, they're a dollar amount, they wanted to pay the borough was eight thousand dollars a year, our math is about thirteen thousand dollars a year. So, I sent it back to Pendot saying, hey, how can we begin discussions about changing, there are possibly changes in the dollar figure in here? And they have yet to respond. Um, but it does require a resolution and a contract approval, but I'm not bringing those to council yet till I get to discuss with Pendot about that monetary number. CGI videos, twenty-five, twenty-six June, um, they will be here, uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six, basically... They are going to be videoing different parts of town. I think you have copied this, not emailed you. Um, basically, I gotta coordinate the school district, fire department, that kinda stuff, they wanna take different shots of Victory Park, the river, probably Valley Streets, this has been repaved, down by Rec Park, the pool, et cetera. So, that is one of their advertising things that the borough does every year, every other year, kinda like the banner program. So, yes, two different programs, basically from the same company, one is CGI banners, which we've been working with, like the military banners, and you have CGI videos, which is, uh, kinda the thing the mayor helps with when she does her introduction to the borough and, and that kinda thing, same company. And that's it for my issues at this point.
Bar chief report? From May, city responded to twenty-two calls, nineteen in-town, three out-of-town, four fires, four automatic fire alarms, five medical assists, four MBAs, two local alarms, and odor, two odor investigations in public service. Carriage responded to twenty-four calls, twenty-one in-town, three out-of-town, three fires, seven automatic fire alarms, six medical assists, four MBAs, two local alarms, and two odor investigations. Um, since last meeting, uh, I had an officer meeting with, uh, my staff and the officers of each station, and, uh, we had some good discussion, we talked about some upcoming trainings, some things that guys would like to do, and we're just gonna try to get that worked out right now with that. Also at the meeting, we talked more about the fire inspection, um, I asked each station to give me names, maybe ten from each station, and I can bring them forward to council to approve. I will go through those names to make sure that we have, you know, capable people and the right people doing what we need to do for that, so then it'll be on record of who is actually gonna be doing the inspections. Um, I would like to keep it to at least two people per inspection. Fighting fire, we're two in, two out, so always have somebody with you. Um, we'll continue on that, my hope is we have January one, we can get everything squared away and get this started. Okay, um, truck thirty-two.
You said January one?
Hopefully, January one.
Okay, I'll make sure.
Yeah. I still have to talk with Caitlin Rex on things of just how much, you know, what we want to look at, I mean, it's gonna be a pretty basic, from what I understand, it's not gonna be a building inspection, and then there again, if I had two people, I'd said, we might need some kind of like a paper form, carbon copy, that I can give them a copy, we can have one to file. But if I had two people, just make a bunch of them, we'll give one of them the yellow, and the other one will be on record for us here, so. Um, truck thirty-two passed the aerial test, note, nothing found, so it's certified again. Um, the eleven sets of turnout gear have arrived, they've been in service now for about three weeks. Um, they were distrib- distributed, thank God we don't have to try them out now in this heat, but, uh, um, it's a different kind of material that I'm not, you know, it's a newer outfit, and they turn around very quickly. I'm anxious to see just how it holds up. And final note, I've already talked to my subordinates and everybody, but I'm leaving Saturday for vacation, I went back till the seventh of July, so... Everybody knows I won't be here, and we will have coverage for Lewestown Borough.
Pat, Sean or Pat?
Sean will be here, Pat's actually on his way with his family to California, they're driving. McKay will be around, and then I also left, uh, all the officers in the stations notes, so we'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good vacation, Bob.
Yep. Mayor?
Thanks, Diamond. Had a real busy, uh, day today, um, I attended up at, uh, Juniata Terrace, uh, for their ceremony, uh, where they were awarded a National Historic Preservation, uh, registered by the, uh, US Department of Interior. And the gentleman that did the, uh, presentation was Congressman, uh, John Joyce. Um, he is, uh, truly a very, very nice man, and, uh, he is very interested in what we have going on in our borough. Um, after the ceremony, uh, he did, uh, make a stop down at the, uh, police department, and, uh, we were lucky enough that, um, excuse me, Kristen was there, uh, she is our mental, uh, health, uh, first responder. So, she was able to, to talk to him about the, uh, the, uh, program, uh, the chief and her have worked, uh, uh, hard to get that program up, and, and it's been a very successful, successful, uh, project. Uh, Kristen does, uh, go out with the officer, if there's a, uh, an issue, a mental health issue, she's been trained on that. Uh, she actually spent, uh, a week in, uh, Nebraska, just this last week, uh, to do a presentation, uh, about the program that we have in, at the, uh, the, uh, police station. So, um, I was really appreciative of what she did, in fact, the, the Congressman was so interested in it, uh, he asked if, we had like a, a little, uh, like, we were seated around talking and having a discussion on this, wanted to know if, uh, it would be all right for them to include that in their newsletter that they sent out, uh, weekly, I think it was, well, I think weekly newsletter, so I thought that was, that was nice, so we'll get a little bit publicity about that. Uh, I've been working with, uh, PSAB, uh, editor of the Borough News, uh, to do an, an article about the school nursing. Uh, I sent down, uh, pictures and, uh, the article, and they said the display turned out very well, and we think that it's going to be in the August edition, so for all of you who, uh, look through the Borough News, we should be in there, uh, at that time, if there's any change, I'll let you know. And, uh, PSAB conference, uh, lucky to have Scott there and, uh, Kim was there. Uh, it was, uh, very well attended, in fact, it was the highest attendance, uh, in twenty-three years, so it was, uh, very informative, and I know I've said it many, many times, that the sessions are wonderful, but the networking that you do and the relationships that you meet with people all over the state is really very valuable. So, uh, maybe next year, you know, we could get a couple more to go and, and see firsthand. Scott, did you wanna say anything about it?
I thought it was very informative, a lot of different sessions, different areas. I mean, I would recommend the other council folks that have had to, to go.
Yeah, he was busy.
Yeah.
I'd run into him every so often, he was going from session to session, and like I said, the sessions are great, but the networking is even better, so... Uh, maybe next year, you know, one of you or two of you would like to go, uh, I think that's all, anybody got any questions with me?
No.
Thank you, David.
Uh, please.
David?
Okay, our calls for service were May, five hundred and fifteen, um, one hundred and forty-eight traffic citations were issued by the officers, thirty-six non-traffic, we had eight DUI arrests, uh, parking tickets, we had six hundred and forty-seven meter or other violations, were ticketed, and eight hundred and fifty-two street maintenance tickets were issued. For the drug report, drug investigators report, uh, total number of five investigations, um, five new investigations, seven undercover buys, one misdemeanor arrest, four search warrants were completed, um, ninety-one grams of methamphetamine were confiscated, ten grams of crack cocaine, and a small amount, within one gram of marijuana was also seized. Uh, one issue, I think it's on the agenda, um, is the, uh, accreditation grant. We're seeking approval to purchase a new server, uh, mainly for the storage of digital media and other evidence. And as far as the accreditation grants, it'll be covered by that, um, but since the amount is twenty-five thousand, it's a little over twenty-five thousand, and we do have three quotes for that, we're recommending the, the quote received from Faulkner Technologies in the amount of twenty-five thousand, one ninety. And that includes installation as well. All the quotes, quotes were pretty close to that, but his includes installation, and he's already been at his, our IT, um, vendor, so we wouldn't have any issues with that. So, if we can, uh, at some point tonight, get council's approval for that or have a vote from council. Uh, license plate readers were installed and have been in service since May first, this is our first full month, uh, and as a result of... And as a result of, the direct result of license plate reader hits, we had sixty-one citations were issued by the officers as a result of LPR alerts. And we do receive a monthly report as far as the number of detections, how many plates are actually scanned. This, for the month of May, it was seventy-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight. So every time the officers are out and about or anywhere they go, the scanner's constantly getting license plates and alerting the officer if there's an issue with that particular plate or vehicle. So they're in use and they have been helpful so far. Do have some things for executive session that we'll discuss later. I do want to also just give a brief statement on the incident from last week. On Monday, June tenth, officers from Los Tomborough PD, as well as officers from Brooklyn County Regional PSP and Grandville responded to a shots fired incident on West Fourth Street. Upon arrival at the scene, responding officers located a male subject armed with a rifle. Subject was contacted by officers who attempted to defuse the situation. Automatically, the male subject was shot and killed by an officer from LPD. Our hearts go out to the subject's family. Death is always tragic regardless of how it happens. I requested state police conduct the investigation, which they're currently doing. Our department has and will continue to cooperate fully with their investigation. The LPD officer involved was placed on administrative duties as is standard protocol, and he will remain there until investigations are concluded. We will also do an internal investigation of the incident and the use of force. We will have no further comment on this incident until the investigations are concluded. Are there any questions that I can answer, I will, but other than that, we'll not have further comment on that.
Is that it, David?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Recreation board?
We didn't have a meeting this last one, but donation status and the number of pool banners is on the chart. So Caitlin and her staff, Lisa and Matt are doing really well on donations, we're over twenty thousand dollars this year. Pool banners, I don't know what we had last year. Caitlin, do you know what we had last year for banners?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, so we're up to forty-eight this year, so they're doing a bang up job with that.
I'll turn it over to our solicitor.
Thanks, most of these items here are informational. The DCNR pool study resolution, I just helped Kim to format that. It's so that the borough can apply for some reimbursement money for the pool study.
Yeah, you already approved it at the last council meeting, we just signed it today because it was already approved. That's just part of the process, the other part is waiting, remember Aquatic Designs, that guy was down there. So we're waiting for them to come back and finish their process that's regulated by DCNR. Once they come back with their process, then we can submit the resolution and the other required documents on our end to get our fifteen thousand dollars. So that was the one part Mark had to do when he completed it.
We're working on an ordinance omnibus amendment. We do this every couple of years, it's just taking the small changes to different ordinances that come to late to either me or Kim or the codes people, the people who have to work with the ordinances, that they just need to be changed, and we do one big ordinance changing them because it's just the most efficient way to do it. So that'll probably be advertised in the upcoming months. We have a sewer rate ordinance for consideration by Borough Council tonight, raising the sewer rates to, let's see. It would be one hundred dollars and forty-five cents for a flat rate, and then five dollars and sixty-one cents for each thousand gallons of water used in excess of that. And it would be effective July one.
We just need to, we vote on it, if you want to approve it.
It's been advertised and posted and ready for consideration.
If you want to take it back to the board.
Let's move.
Seven.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye, my.
Last month or at a prior meeting, you had directed me to go ahead with abolishing your parking authority and folding that into a streets parking board. I'm currently working on a asset transfer agreement with the parking authority whereby they would transfer all their assets, which are essentially the parking lots, back to the borough, then the borough would own and operate them. And we'll have a street parking board formed. I think we have like one one twenty-five is a target date to get this all wrapped up. And the PennDOT resolution, is that the one I already addressed?
Yeah, that's one I already talked about. I put it on here so we don't lose the visibility of it. That is part of the required winter maintenance contract. It's already done and written up, it's just sitting in limbo until we get the rest of the paperwork worked out with PennDOT to find out if you guys want to approve it or not. Because if you don't approve it, PennDOT's gonna have to plow their streets in town. And they're not gonna like that. But they're only offering us eight thousand dollars, and we went through and did the math. Ben has done all the math and they're underpaying us, they are. So that's just stuff I have for you still there.
That's all I have, thank you.
Turn it back over to Tim, art manager.
Unfinished new business, the first thing is Borough Hall closer at noon on twelfth July. We'd like permission to close the Borough Hall at noon so we can advertise it for the employees to attend the third annual employee appreciation day at Rec Park.
Any motion?
Yeah, I think we ought to include that we leave like the refuge and that when if they wanna work through their dinnertime and get done early, you know, that. And I think we should do that too.
What do you mean?
No, we did last year. We never did last year.
We closed at noon last year. I'm not sure what you mean, Eddie, when you say to work.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna close Borough, you're gonna close Borough Hall down.
We're gonna close at noon on the twelfth, yes.
What I'm saying is, we should allow the refuge workers and that, if they wanna hurry up and, you know, they get done by one thirty or whenever they get done, come down.
Yeah, we can do that, I was just asking like we've done in the past, just close the Borough at noon and everybody goes down.
Why is this not being held on a Saturday?
Because nobody will show up on Saturday. Borough employees will not come in, I got trouble having Borough employees come to date on these things. Once they find out it's out there, they already know it's out there, it's last minute, you're gonna get people trying to take personal time, making doctor's appointments, because they don't wanna go to these things. They do, but they don't.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm in favor of, like I said, as long as, as long as we allow the other ones,
Yes.
when they can get done.
Yes.
There was a lot on there last year.
Yeah, every year last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause they, cause the, the pools invited too. So those guys come over to eat when they can and then go back over there. You know, Eads invited, you know, the police show up. It was pretty well attended last year, last two really, really well attended.
Yeah.
And I know Zeke was the cornhole champion and we wanted to dethrone him this year, so we wanna make sure this happens.
We need a motion.
Yeah, I do motion.
So this, I guess one comment from my side, and I don't want this to come off in all the way. We're a little bit different than a private business. This is a government body, and the public expects it to be open Monday through Friday. That's my only concern.
It was okay last year, I don't, did we bring any complaints? No. We are first out. I think it's good for bully morale. Only a couple hours.
Make a motion, we guess we're good.
No second?
All right, no second, then it's not, then we won't do it. The employee appreciation, we want to deny it.
All right.
Let's go to refuse bags. What's that, Eddie?
I just shangler.
Yes. Refuge bags without tags.
Let the people know who wanted to do it and who can't do it.
You wanna roll call, Eddie?
There's no second, you can't do a session.
All right.
You wanna second it?
I'm not allowed, am I?
Yeah, you can step down, you can step down.
You can step down.
I second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose.
Aye, no.
Got two and two.
Well, if he doesn't vote, it's not a medicass.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that passed.
That passed.
Did you vote, Steve?
Pardon?
Did you vote?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't have your thing on, oh, sorry.
I'd get back, yeah.
Okay.
All right, refuse bags without tags. This has been an ongoing issue for a while now with the refuse department. Not the refuse department in general, the department itself, but just this issue of having bags for trash. So this one person contacted me, he's a property owner in town, these are all his properties. He's actually a really good property, he contains his properties, he's probably one of the best ones we have in town. He lives in California, Ron Chalon. But he contacted me and says he has a bill for over two thousand dollars, let me see exactly two thousand, for bags without tags for his apartments. And he doesn't understand how people can get away with putting trash without bags. So he's asking, he's asking the Borough Council for exemption on this two thousand dollars. I, I can't make that exemption, that's too much money, it's gotta go to council. So it's up to council whether they want to exempt him for paying these bags without tags. I don't know how you do it, that's a lot of bags, a lot of bags.
I make a motion, we hold them responsible for it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote. Does he buy with stickers?
Oh yeah, he paid the like the eighteen thousand dollar bill, he pays all his bills and stuff. This was just the bags for bags without tags that he wanted to get exempt from. All right, Eads invoices, we have the dollar figure here, it's thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars and five cents. This is a combination of, let me see if I can find it in here, see if it's in here. It's I and I stuff, Lucas, it's I and I.
The Digestor Project.
Yeah, Digestor Project, there it is.
Everything with the consent order.
There it is. He broke it down for us. G I S mapping, flow meters we talked about, which is intermunicipal, intermunicipal, borough only. G I S, intermunicipal, intermunicipal.
One comment on it, I just have to say, Tom and Lucas gave me a demo of the data we're getting from the flow meters today. That information that we're getting from the flow meters is solid gold. I mean, it's, it's really good stuff. It allows the guys to proactively see problems before they happen in real time. It's, it's really good stuff, guys.
It is. So we need to approve the paying of these invoices.
So move, second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote.
Walnut Street Park food library box, so Lisa and Cass Goss approached me about this. Let's see where I can, I'm gonna have to put it up on here. They want to put a box up, up by Walnut Park, up off Walnut and Catherine. See if I can get the pictures. They wanna put it over here by the park, I'm assuming it's on the side right here. Cause they wanna be able to watch it from Cassie's house with the cameras, this is a view from her porch so she can, she can see it. Now, Lisa and Cassie talked to me about this, this is the box, they wanna build one, but you could buy one for three hundred and sixty-nine ninety-five. So you got a couple of things you can consider. One, you can just approve them to build one and put one up. Cause we've done it before on the parking lot above Rec Park, there's one over there, it's still in great shape, it's got the books and stuff in it. Or we, the borough can buy it and then put it up by the park. And that way it's a professional box, it's gonna be, you know, waterproof, cause I don't know what it's gonna look like when somebody else makes it, but it's your call.
What's it for?
It's for putting books for kids to read over by the park and putting, what's the word for food that doesn't spoil? Non-perishable items in there for kids, like crackers and snacks and stuff like that.
They like the box down to Grace, I think they're on the.
Over there, yep, down there, over by Rec Park, we have one. That was Ridgeway last weekend, Ridgway has a nice one set up down by their park, by the creek, with chairs to sit on, with books on there, people reading stuff. So it's actually a good idea. So you can prove them to build one and put it up, or you can just have us, have Ben buy one and our guys put it up and be done with it, we know it's in the right spot, we know it's professionally done.
I need a suggestion, one way or the other.
There's a couple around town and they look like they have some activity to them.
They do.
And being there right there at the playground, I think that would be.
I'll make a motion to have them build it, the other ones that they build around the community look pretty nice.
Yeah. No second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote.
No.
Got it. All right, Kiss Creek debris removal contract. Zeke's here, so if you have any questions, he'll be glad to answer. Okay, this is looking down onto the creek, our interceptor pipe, let's see, you can see it right here. See the bike going across? This is all the debris in Kiss Creek that's going down and pushing against our pipe. You can see it from this angle here. This needs to be gone. We've been working on this ever since we had the flood, trying to get quotes to come in for people to get rid of it basically, to pull it out of the creek. I actually sent some emails out for some internal staff, but nobody responded to any of my emails for help. So bottom line, the cheapest quote we've received so far is seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. They have somebody come in and get that out.
We gotta do it.
Those local contractors, like the coast guards.
We've gone through it, no, some are, but some aren't, probably just, the low, in fact, how many bids did you probably ask for, six? I don't know.
I've tried to get six or seven.
Yeah, yeah.
This gentleman came back to me, I had three that will not even attempt to do it. One big company I met there, but he still didn't give me an estimate, and the other estimate was twenty-six thousand. Are they gonna actually haul it away or just give it enough so floods down the stream?
That, the estimate there is so much for them to remove the stuff and then like two grands for them to haul it out of the way. So it totals like seventy-nine hundred.
And county even trying to help us, they gave me somebody to call, they refused to.
Yeah.
But because of I and I pushing on this interceptor, this, this could be a problem, that's why.
I don't think it hurt me.
Not now, but it probably could.
It will, yes.
Right through that pipe.
That pipe feeds all the center of town. All the center of town just through that pipe to the plant, so if that breaks, it's major.
And not only if it breaks, it's sewer, sewage that'll go in the creek, and that's huge D E P fines.
I'll make a motion for the seventy-nine hundred. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote.
No.
Yeah, it's fence, custer, legal invoice. This is the, an invoice we received for the discussion with the nineteen eighty-two agreement, the EDU discussion, the commercial discussion. It's actually a lot cheaper than we thought it was gonna be. It's less than five thousand, I could have approved it myself, but I won't do that, I want you guys to see this as, because we're tracking this part of I and I costs, but we need to get this approved. This is the lawyer that's been helping us through the D E P with the consent order, all the discussions with Dairy Township. This is the lawyer that's been helping us through the D E P with the consent order, um, all the discussions with Dairy Township, uh, et cetera. Um, so that is the last, it's the only invoice we've received so far. Frankly, Summer and I were surprised it was so cheap. I've never seen a cheap lawyer, no offense, Mark. But the price on this was really, this was actually really, really, I'm sure Mark would, I mean, I mean, the invoice is literally eight pages. I mean, so he actually, he, yeah, this was not bad.
Remember some math there?
No, it was no math. We learned that, so. So you got a counterpart out there that's doing us good, Mark.
All right. I need a motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
All right, Policy Letter Approval. This went through the Personnel Committee. Um, I mean, they recommended we bring it to council, uh, for discussion. One is paid rental leave. We don't have this policy within the borough or fit into the Borough Le, Borough Blue Town Employee Handbook. Um, this is something that is, uh, it builds morale. It's good for the, the families. Um, and it's actually good for the borough because it's good for families, it's good for the borough. Basically what it is, is, uh, paid time off when you adopt a child, foster child, give birth, et cetera. Is anyone add on this, Lacy?
Um, nothing really other than it's just, it's a, an attractive benefit to offer. Um, I know you can't offer huge increases, but this is an attractive benefit. Two weeks to a father, six weeks to a mother. Currently, right now, the state requires it for all of their state employees. Um, and they have increased it from six weeks for mothers to eight weeks. Um, we're not at a state level currently, but, you know, it's slowly trickling down. So we're not required to have something like this, but it's definitely a very attractive benefit to offer our employees. Um, we do have seven women that work for the borough and the rest are all men. I think, you know, offering something to ensure that our working families are able to bond with their children and not like dipping into their financial security account is something that I think we should foster.
Paid rental leave is the first one. Here's a list of questions, uh, common questions people ask. I sent this out to you in email earlier. I assume you've already seen it. And the other one is social media policy. Now, this has affected us two or three times now where we've had employees called into the, uh, H R office, my office, to talk about comments or making on social media about the borough. Uh, so this is something that needs to be put in place for the Borough Blue Town Handbook. This is also something, not this particular one, but very similar to Bob Douglas and I are gonna be working on here soon for, for the fire department. Um, but this one here is specifically for borough employees. You gotta be very careful what you put on social media. Uh, and like I said, two or three times we've had to deal with that with employees for things that they put on social media.
Make a motion, we adopted you.
Second? I'm gonna step down in a second. All in favor say aye.
Roll call.
All right, good.
Steve Hudson?
No.
Scott Dutchel?
No.
Abby Seer?
Yes.
Jim Still?
Yes.
Matt Moore?
No.
Well, how about the social media?
That was both of them.
That was both of them.
That was both of them, yeah. They both same time. All right. The next one is an update of the salary compensation, uh, policy of resolution they do every year. Uh, we find it in here. Let's see. Yep. This went through Personnel Committee. Basically, um, there's, there's three positions on here. One is a part-time streets enforcement officer, fourteen dollars an hour. There's a street sweeper parking enforcement officer, fourteen dollars an hour, and the summer help for fifteen dollars an hour. In order for this to be legal, it's gotta be approved as an addendum to the twenty twenty-four salaries compensation resolution addendum.
No move.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Access equipment bid. I just want permission, I mean, I can do it, but I want permission from you guys to put some equipment up for bid, access equipment. One of them's gonna be the old police car we got. Uh, I don't know how much money we made on the last batch of stuff we sold. What do you think, Summer? Maybe tw- fifteen thousand? Maybe twelve thousand? But we got some money out of the old equipment and we got it out of our lots and they go to one vehicles.
Whatever we got, it doesn't look good setting that.
Yeah, so I, I, I want permission basically to just start, but it won't go forward unless it goes for you guys. But the list of equipment, so I just wanna make sure I can start the process.
Wait a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against?
And then you have the county loan, which is the next document that you're going to need to approve. Uh, I was asked by Jim Latier this week what the status was of it when I was up there. And I told him that you guys were gonna, you know, discuss it on the night and then, yeah, what's today? I think, yeah, the nineteenth tonight. So coun, the council needs to, to vote on whether you will accept the county loan as offered in the email for one million dollars.
No move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disapprove?
I'll give a mark and get that rolling. It's gonna be a legal document. All right, let's talk about a zero-turn lawnmower here. All right, so zero-turn mowers. Ours, oh, you can see twenty-three hundred hours on one, seventeen hundred hours on the other, twenty thousand, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Um, they get worked hard. You can see all the areas in town that they cut. And that's not all of it, cause there's other big yards and lots of people don't cut. The codes calls and we, we cut it. So you get about fifty-five acres of grass. It's mowed once or twice a week in town and they're, they're just getting them worked out. We just blew a head gasket on one of them. I'm not sure whose one it was. It might have been the X mark. Um, but we were able to get the parts to, our mechanic got it fixed. So you got two choices on here. And it's CoStar's price. So retail price is sixteen, CoStar's is twelve. This one's fourteen, cost is ten. You ha, you can take it out of our book because it has to do with COVID because of getting people outside and it's parts. Um, the recommendation from Ben is to get another X mark because that's what we have. And if something does happen, we can exchange parts and stuff. Um, so he would like to keep the same type of lawnmower for what we have. So he would like to purchase the X mark and I support him on that. So we have the same fleet.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we table this to closer to the end of the year. Second.
All right, back to the agenda. Police Department Server, twenty-five thousand one hundred and ninety?
Yeah, motion.
Yeah, they have to vote on it.
Yeah.
Well, the issue on this is anything over twenty-three thousand has to be a public bid and sealed bid.
No, we have a motion on the table on that till the end of the year. Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Yeah, they can actually maybe take him if I can do it.
Yeah, it's just the I approved until later, I guess. Never seen that, okay. Then you got the Police Department Server, which is next, twenty-five thousand one nine, one ninety, but anything over twenty-three thousand has to be a sealed bid. And that's with the bid process, unless it's CoStars. Do you know if those are CoStars? Cause I don't, I know Scott's not CoStars cause I tried to get CoStar's stuff with him before and he doesn't have CoStars. Do you have a bid that's CoStars?
I'll have to look through the bids here to see if, you know, if I'm marked.
Yeah, just go through. If you got something on CoStars, we can do it. If it's not CoStars, we gotta follow rules.
Uh, the one is, definitely the one that is.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, a bid issue.
Yeah. You said one is CoStars?
I see one that's marked as CoStars.
Well, it takes.
So we have to go with that bid?
Yeah, it's CoStars. You don't need to put it out there.
Well, I mean, you could put it out to bid if you want.
You could put it out for bid, but it's a sealed bid. You have to wait till next now. If Dave wants to wait to do that. How's he need the server, Dave?
Um, this part of our accreditation process, I mean, it's not.
To get accredited?
Yeah, it's not something that we need to replace this month, but we're trying to get this equipment ordered.
Yeah.
For the grant, through the grant, so.
So if you have one that's CoStars, you represent the council, we can go that route.
No, I don't wanna use the CoStar bid because we, we didn't wanna go with that vendor.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, except we're already.
I think they're, they're gonna support Sean. It's just that we gotta do it legally.
Yeah, we can review. Rich probably wasn't, Rich got these bids and he probably wasn't marked that.
So, we can hold that. That's fine. Yeah, we, I'll work with him offline with him. Yeah, I'll work with him on that. I'll work with you offline, Dave. We'll get that going then. And street sweeper operations in Valley Street. There's a moratorium right now on street sweeping Valley Street, but now that's complete. I think council needs to make a decision and vote for, uh, resuming street sweeping enforcement on Valley Street.
So move.
Sorry.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye? Oppose? Okay, yeah.
Tom has a Russian exact discussion. Yeah, he has, so he has to, he has to follow some. Yeah, he has, Dave, that plus you have to follow that.
Okay, we're gonna go into exact session right now. Everybody have to wait.